We'd like to give a very big congratulations to world champion Greg Victors, brother of Representative Ponca We Victors, who won first place at the World Fancy Dance Championship in Oklahoma. His dancing preserves Native American culture and educates the world. Greg was recently recognized by Governor Laura Kelly for winning the world championship title. And here at the Cedric County community, we're lucky to have him as part of our family, as a transportation driver with the Department on Aging. Congratulations, Greg. At this time, we'd like to show you a video.
I am a transportation driver for the Department of Aging here at Cedric County. Every day is just a blessing because, you know, personally, I have a servant's heart. You know, I love providing service to people, and this job allows me to be able to give back to the communities here in Cedric County. Well, the recognition that I'm getting is, it comes from last fall, I was in a competition, a worldwide competition, for the war dance, which I perform as a Native American. And I'm happy to say that I won a world championship title, and I brought that back to Kansas. I've always danced and performed, and I use that as an avenue to bring cultural awareness. It's a blessing to be able to have a passion, to have a job such as this, and then to be able to, on my native side, to be able to walk that line in another culture, is a wonderful feeling to be a traditionalist for our native people. And so it's just a huge blessing.
Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and to our civic leaders. Good morning to everybody, and just very grateful and happy to be here.
Well, thank you. We sincerely appreciate what you do for our Aging Department, for the transportation, and congratulations on your award. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. It really means a lot to me. You know, all praise and glory to Wakanda, our God, and I just want to say thank you to family and friends and supporters. We all work hard every day in our daily lives, and just to get the little amount of recognition always means something. And so I'm going to treasure this forever. It's been a whirlwind of a month with, you know, the state of Kansas and Governor Kelly's recognition, and then now with my own home here in Cedric County recognizing me, and it's just a wonderful feeling. I would like to take this opportunity to thank, you know, Cedric County is full of good people, good workers. I'm really proud of being a part of this Cedric County family, and I work with good people in my department every day, but I want to say a special thank you to Candace Bonison, who's my manager. She's been very supportive, not just as a good leader, but a great leader. She's involved with her employees in how we conduct ourselves outside of our clocking in and clocking out, and what we do in our own lives, and just been, you know, very supportive and encouraging. And so I'd like to thank her at this time. You know, I know we got business to do, and I didn't want to take too much time, but I just want to say, I think every day about the humble beginnings I come from, a reservation in Arizona. I was born in a, it's very, back then it was a very poverty-stricken area. And one of the things my parents and my family instilled in me was to do our best to try to be traditionalists, learning our customs, learning our ways, speaking our language. And I'm just always blessed to realize today, as an older man, that a lot of those things, what they told me, one thing I think of is they said that if you learn your culture and you follow God, Wakanda, and you take care of these things, it's going to take you a long ways. And I'm very fortunate to say I've been to four continents all over the world, dancing and performing for ambassadors and dignitaries and people. And so it's just been a wonderful blessing, and I thank those elders who took the time to teach me and to give me a gift and talents from our God to be able to do what I do. So I'm grateful for that.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Howell has...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure everybody gets a good chance to see this proclamation from the state of Kansas. I like the way they do this. We should do something like this once in a while. I think it's pretty awesome. But this was from Representative Ponca We Victors, which I understand, I know she's your family. I've known her for a very long time, and I've known you for a number of years. Candace, you guys can take a look at that. I just want to say that I'm very impressed with her, especially. I didn't know that you had this hidden talent, I guess. Now I know. But Ponca We has been a champion, bringing information and education to the entire state of Kansas, frankly, on Native American history and culture and history. So I appreciate what she does. It's such an important part of our state. And I think what you guys are doing is fantastic to make this fresh and educational to everybody. I think what you do is great. Greg, thank you for what you do. And I'm glad to know you work for Cedric County. I've known you, I've worked for Cedric County in the past, and I just want to say I appreciate all you do. You're a kind soul. I think you're a very, very nice person, and I love the fact that you're doing this, and that you work for Cedric County. Thank you for all you do.
I appreciate it. It's good to see you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Greg, thank you. Congratulations. And you dress pretty nice as well, besides your costume.
Oh, these are, this is what I wear every day on the transportation.
Oh, it's okay. Hey, you said you were born in Arizona, in the Four Corner area?
No, we're south of that, almost close to the Mexican border, around Tucson, that area.
Tucson, Cochise County?
Yeah, yeah, down in that area, the Tono'otam Reservation. And so I'm just...
I'm familiar with that as well. That's, you're right.
Beautiful, beautiful country.
British country, but it's...
Very hot.
Very impoverished.
Yeah, yeah. We've come a long ways, too. Back when I was growing up, it was the way I talked, but over the years through Native Enterprises, and it's taken a great turn for the forward future.
Oh, good. Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad you're part of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And after Commissioner Cruz speaks, I think the Commissioner might want to come down and have a picture taken with you for the world champion fancy dances. So we'll take a little break after Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to ask. I've seen you dance on a number of occasions, and the spirit and energy that you bring, it is electric, and you can't walk away from seeing you dance without feeling inspired. So I was so excited to see you sitting here. I almost didn't recognize you because I didn't recognize you outside of your regalia. So I appreciate, and I'm excited that you're here today. So I'm excited to get a picture. Let's go.
Commissioners, let's go down to the floor.
Okay. I am... Dance, which I, well, the recognition that I'm getting is...
Thank you very much, Greg. We appreciate it, and congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say again, I'm very, very honored to be able to be recognized for representing Cedric County, Kansas, and Wichita. Just one little quick note, I just want to be able to see if you guys can do something for me on your way home tonight or when you're coming in in the morning. I've always admired Cedric County and the city of Wichita for just this area of conducting business. I just want you to know you're a part of history. Many years ago, before there was the state of Kansas, the Call, the Oto, the Wajage, the Kaowa, the Cheyenne Arapah, they all used to meet here and conduct business with our tribes. And so you're a part of history, and this is all historical land. And we talked about territories and food resources and water. And all of these things happened here along these rivers. And so I want you to take that with you and to feel that energy about what you do for our county. And so we're very appreciative for what you do as well. So thank you for this recognition. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you again. Thanks for reminding us of our heritage in this region. We appreciate it.
Congratulations again, Greg. Okay, Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda. You will consider a resolution reappointing Tom Page, the Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board, as recommended by Commissioner Lacy Cruz. A consideration of a grant award for the Older American Act in the amount of $2,426,556 from the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services for ARPA capital improvements. A presentation of the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and a report of the Boards and Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on June 2, 2022. With that, Chairman, I turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Akeem. I appreciate it. I want to thank everyone for joining us today, a little bit later than we normally meet. We do have a conference going on over at The Hyatt and some tours at the Smart Factory today and tomorrow. So I appreciate the flexibility that everyone had so that we can have this meeting. But with that, I want to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order for June 8, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Incavication to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag.
Thank you.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We did not have anyone signed up either online or in person today. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, resolution reappointing Tom Page to the Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Mike Papun?
I'm sorry, Mike Papun. Beg your pardon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Councilor. The only appointment we have today is Commissioner Cruz's appointment to her fourth district Citizens Advisory Board. She wants to appoint Tom Page, and we have prepared a resolution regarding the same, and it's in proper form, and asks you to approve the resolution.
Very good. Now, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Tom Page is not only an incredible guitar player who can be seen around town entertaining folks with incredible music, but he is a much-needed voice for the Access Advisory Board. So it is with great pleasure that we reappoint him. And so I will make the motion to adopt the resolution reappointing Tom Page to the Citizens Advisory Board. Access Advisory Board, sorry, excuse me.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And he is not available today, so our kind of clerk will throw him in at a future date. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item B, consideration of a grant award for the Older American Act in the amount of $2,426,556 from the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services for the American Rescue Plan Act capital improvements, modernization, and service enhancements.
Morning, Annette.
Morning, Commissioners. Annette Graham, Department on Aging. This is a grant award through the Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services for older Americans, funding that comes under the ARPA to the Administration on Community Living. This is allocated based on a state-approved interstate federal funding formula. So the amount of the dollars that come in are allocated to each of the 11 area agencies on aging with a pre-identified amount. That is $2,426,556. That includes a federal grant of $2,27,330, state grant, match money of $394,619, and a local match of $4,607. So this grant is in addition to our regular annual Older Americans Act, and the annual allocation of Older Americans Act in that fiscal year for that regular grant begins October 1 and goes through September 30 of every year. That usual amount is $3,200,000. These funds are on top of that. They are to be utilized much in the same fashion we do with the regular Older Americans Act, in that it is identified to be used for a certain amount for Title III B, which is in-home and access services, Title III C I, which is the Congregate Nutrition Program, Title III C II, which is the home-delivered program, Title III D, which is disease prevention, health promotion, and Title III E, which is the family caregiver program. There is also an amount that is identified that is to be used for administration, and that is the same for each of the 11 area agencies on aging. This money is available, the grant award came to the state and was available April 1 of last year and goes through September 30 of 2023. So in the agenda item before, you are requesting budget authority for fiscal, for 2022 through 2023. And that is amounts are identified, and then we will also be using money in the year 2024, and that will be brought to you during that budget time. Out of this money, the $394,619 is state funds. Unlike other ARPA funds, the Older Americans ARPA dollars required a match from each of the area agencies on aging and from the state. That was a pretty significant amount of match. So back late in March, the state identified that they had state funds available that could be used to meet most all of the match. The caveat was that they wanted those funds spent primarily in the congregate and home-delivered provider service arena and in the congregate sites. And this was to provide infrastructure and equipment and upgrades for the providers and for the nutrition sites. And we have several across the three county area. And these funds have to be expended, invoiced and expended by June 30 of this year. So most of our detailed work at this point has been how are we going to expend those matched dollars? We have worked with our congregate and in-home service providers to gather their needs for infrastructure improvements and for equipment upgrades, and we worked with the congregate nutrition sites to gather the same information. We had to submit that plan to the state for their approval before we could move forward. They have received that and approved it. And so we are set to move forward with our providers to start expending that money today because June 30 is very around the corner. So there was a lot of quick work on that. So what you have before you is a pretty general budget for the Older Americans ARPA money, and what will be going in the future to how to actually expend those dollars to, under the regular Older Americans Act, but also to look at innovation, creative approaches, modernization, things like that, because it's one-time-only money. So we can't start up services and get to a cliff with people receiving services. So we'll be working with our providers and with the network in the three county area to identify ways to perhaps pilot things or modernize programs or try different approaches. Because we know, moving forward, the population continues to grow that need the services, but also that the way that they want to utilize service and prefer to access those services is changing. We know that it's changed significantly during and after COVID and the pandemic, but also just with the changing population as we have a new group of people aging into the system and needing services. Also, you know, the impact of COVID has really impacted nursing home utilization and the desire for people to remain at home. That's always been the preferred placement, but we're seeing more and more that that really is changing, and more and more people are seeking to access services and information and resources to help them prolong community tenure and also to expand their healthcare, their health span. So what I mean by that is the desire to stay healthy longer, and there's new programming and new ideas. So there's a lot of things we'll be working on in the future with our Central Plains Advisory Board and with our community providers, and looking at the changing needs as we determine how to spend these funds through September of 2024. So with that, I would request that you approve the grant, authorize the acceptance of the grant, the chairman, and to sign all the necessary documents and establish the budget authority. Seeing a very slow return to congregate nutrition programs. People are slow to return to that. And what was established, kind of in the interim during COVID, was a model called grab-and-go, where individuals could come and pick up the meal and take it. That doesn't really meet the true definition of a congregate meal under the Older Americans Act, because part of that requirement for a congregate meal includes socialization. So with the grab-and-go model, that doesn't have the socialization. But I can get you that number. Would you like last fiscal years?
So kind of like I asked for the transportation numbers, I'd like a couple of years before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and then today. So if we could do like we did with transportation, maybe back to 2017-ish?
Like 2019, 2020, and 20?
2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, and then this fiscal year.
Okay.
And then the same question with the home-delivered meals.
Okay. You can get that.
And then who are our home-delivered meals partners? Could you remind us again?
The home-delivered meals are Senior Services, Mom's Meals. There's a program through Susan B. Allen Hospital in El Dorado. And in Newton, there is another provider, the Grand Central Station. And also API does some home-delivered meals in the rural areas. So we have a multitude of providers. Senior Services is probably one of the better-known ones for you in Cedric County, and they provide meals within the city limits of Wichita with this funding.
So how do we determine, if this is kind of within the region here, how do we determine how much funding goes where? Is that based on meals delivered?
It is based on numbers, yes.
Okay. So could you get us those, could you get me specifically? I don't know if other Commissioners are interested in that information, but I'd like those numbers as well.
Well, that would be the meals number. So we look at those meals that are delivered and provided.
So you're looking at, so congregate meals and home-delivered meals, you're going to, that's the same number?
No, we look at those meals, they're two different programs. There's a home-delivered program, which is Title III C II, and Title III I is the congregate program. And so when we allocate funds, we look at the meals that have been served in those areas. The allocation is usually based on a per-meal cost.
Okay.
So we have a percentage. So what I'm saying is we have a percentage that helps guide us in how we break down how funding is allocated to those providers.
Okay. So I appreciate that information. I would like the information around how many meals have been delivered for those, that same span of years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cruz asked me any of my questions, so I won't repeat. But I would like to have that date as well. This is exactly where I was headed. Regarding these levels of grant funds, are these increases or decreases? Or can you describe how has this changed over time?
The Traditional Older Americans Act?
Well, yeah, what we're approving today...
So this is a brand-new funding. The ARPA money was ARPA at the federal level, and it was allocated to the Administration on Community Living for the Older Americans Act. So this is one-time-only funding.
Okay. And this is for pilot programs?
This is for traditional Older Americans Act purposes. It is also to be used for modernization and improvements and enhancements. So each area agency on aging, the way the Older Americans Act works is, each area agency on aging takes those funds and looks at the community need and individualizes how they spend those dollars within those titles. So the funds are allocated in a dollar amount for each of those titles, III B, III C I, III II, III D, III E. And then we look at community need, and because this is one-time-only funding, we know that there are things that will have to happen with these dollars that won't be the traditional model, which is providing services to population that then you build up that need. For instance, if you used all these fundings to build up your nutrition programs, then you're going to come to a cliff in September of 2024, and those fundings will no longer be available. So we're looking at, and so under the allocation from the federal government and from the state, they urged us to look at, you know, doing some modernization. Because this is one-time-only funding, once in a lifetime that the network has to be able to look at different ways of doing business and to take an opportunity. So we'll be trying out some new kind of programs that would be time-limited and help give us some information, using technology, doing other kinds of services, looking at that. So we will be working, again, we have an advisory council that has to approve any of the plans that we do. That advisory council is made up of the advisor councils from each of the three counties. Like, we have a Cedric County Department on Aging council. Butler and Harvey also do. So those are also involved with those plans for how we expend those dollars.
So you and I have talked a number of times about trying to find some efficiencies. I know that Meals on Wheels or Home Delivered Meals has a secondary purpose. That is to do a physical, face-to-face check on people to make sure they're doing okay and that they're responsive to someone coming to their door. And I know that that's been desirable. I don't know if that's a requirement or not, but you and I have talked over the years about trying to find some efficiencies to maybe deliver several days' worth of meals at one time. Some people, some meals don't have to be warmed up, and some meals don't have to be refrigerated. And some people might be able to, you know, prepare some of that themselves if they had the food and had the, you know, they had the stuff there to do that. So trying to find some ways to do that, and then checking on people electronically, you know, using communications. When gas is $5 a gallon, and probably going up from there, I think it's important that we start looking at actual efficiencies, because these meals, this money covers the cost of the food. It doesn't really cost, it doesn't cover the cost of delivery. That's all done by volunteers, which is going to be a huge challenge going forward. When you have a labor shortage and we have gas at $5 a gallon, we're going to have a delivery problem. We need to be thinking about how to do this more efficiently. With regards to the, there's no local match on this in terms of we're using this money out of ARPA, but there's no actual general fund local match on this?
There is a local match of $4,607, and that exists within our current budget.
And you mentioned the advisory council. Have they already been part of this discussion to bring this presentation to us today?
This is not for the Cedric County Department on Aging, but for the CPA. So we have kept them informed about the dollar amount and about the state match money and about the plans for using that. So they will be involved as we move forward with the utilization of the other program dollars.
So as these folks receive this money, are they going to provide some type of report back to talk about how they spent the money? Cruz, that data is very important. I'd like to know additionally how this, how these funds are broken out by agency and what they're doing with that. And then down the road, as it develops those performance reports, how they spent the money, I'd like to see that in the future. That's a future request. Okay, I'll bring it up at the time. But those are things I would like to be able to verify, how this money was spent and what we did with, you know, what we did with that, so to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I could just make a comment to that. These funds will fund providers and service providers, but they will also be used internally. So we have staff that also do programs. So just wanted to kind of let you know that. But yeah, we will be moving forward. And one other thing you had brought up was the home-delivered meals. So no, it is not a requirement under the home-delivered meals program that they have that in-person, daily contact. That is typically how it's provided, and it is a good outcome. However, it is not required by the federal... However, it is not required by the federal regulations. We do contract with Mom's Meals with both federal dollars and other dollars. And that is a program that delivers person-tailored meals to an individual. It can be seven, they're delivered once every two weeks, and it can be one meal a day or two meals a day. So that does not have that in-person contact, but there are a lot of areas in our region where there are not service providers who can deliver those meals on a daily basis, or without this program, they wouldn't have access to that service.
Hey, well, thank you, Annette. We appreciate it very much, and this is kind of exciting. I make a motion that we accept the grant and authorize the appropriate actions.
Second.
We have a motion on the second. Any further discussion? Dean, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner Meister.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Annette. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item C, Presentation of the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Well, good morning, Hope. We have good news.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope Hernandez, your accounting director. Before I present the 2021 Annual Financial Report, I'm going to let Michael Gerber, a partner at BKD, brief you on the 2021 audit results. And he is going to be joining us via Zoom.
Morning, Michael.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to present here today. And Hope, thank you very much for turning it over. As you might have noticed, Hope did introduce me as a partner at BKD, and rightfully so. We did issue our report under the name BKD. But just to hopefully alleviate any confusion or anything like that, I did just want to inform the Commissioners that effective on June 1, BKD merged with another accounting firm called DHG. And our new name, we are treating that as a merger of equals, and our new name going forward is Forvis. So again, just to alleviate any confusion there, really, the only thing that's changed from our side is the name. You're still going to be dealing with the same team that you always have moving forward. So just wanted to at least mention that. Really, the first thing I wanted to talk about was just certainly thank the Sedgwick County staff throughout this audit process. Probably for the last six months, they've been dealing with our team, been doing a great job getting us what we need to do our job. I'm not going to sit here and name names, because there is certainly a long list, and I'm sure I'll leave somebody out. But I just wanted to let you know that everybody was very helpful, getting us the information that we needed to do our job and to issue our report. I have with me the printed copy. You don't necessarily have to have this with you, but obviously, this is the book that was ultimately issued. I'm going to reference a few areas within this book, but again, you don't necessarily have to have this in front of you. But within the financial section, Section A of the report, at the very beginning of that section is our independent auditor's report. This is really the only thing that comes from us, from BKD, three pages long, but we did issue a clean, an unmodified opinion. That's the opinion that you want as a result of an audit, so certainly good news there. If you really read through that carefully, you'll notice that the narrative has changed a little bit from the prior years. That's as a result of a new standard that was implemented. But again, no change in your opinion there. It is a clean opinion. Also, within that financial section, there's what we call the management discussion and analysis area. If there's only one section that you look at through this entire report, I'd encourage you to look at these 10 pages. This is really kind of the narrative that your management team has put together and kind of explained some of the highlights, some of the changes that have occurred throughout the last couple of years. So again, that's a good place to look at if you're just trying to get a summary of what's within the entire book there. I'll also point out that we did not have any new accounting standards to be adopted here for the current year, but please be aware that next year, we will be implementing the new lease standard. Effectively, all leases will now go, will now be recorded as assets and liabilities going forward. Again, that will be for the next year as we go through the audit process. And we are helping your team kind of get ready for that and making sure everything is prepared prior to field work, so moving forward with that project. The other items that I'm going to mention, towards the back of the book, there's a section called the single audits area. Obviously, you're well aware that you receive a number of government funds. There are certain requirements associated with the funds that you receive from that, anything from, you know, what the money can be spent on. There's eligibility requirements, there's reporting requirements. We tested four different programs that you received federal dollars for here for the current year, going through each of those requirements. And the good news is, we did not have any written findings associated with any of those, with any of those programs that we tested. So again, another point of good news within that area. And then the last, the last item that I'm going to mention, we do issue within the commission what we call our management letter. This is a narrative letter that we always do walkthroughs of your cash inflows, outflows, payroll cycles, things of that nature. If we have any suggestions for improvements or any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so some issues, we would write those within those letter, within that letter. And the good news is, we do not have any written comments again here for this year. I think that's the second year in a row of a clean management letter as well. So again, hats off to your finance team, getting any issues that we discovered in prior year corrected. And so now we're two years running with a clean letter on that side as well. So with that, that kind of wraps up my talking points, but I did just want to open it up if there are any questions from the Commissioners at this point in time.
Well, thank you, Michael. You did brief us individually last week, and we appreciate that. So the findings weren't a total surprise to us, although they wouldn't have been a surprise to us anyway, because we got a fantastic finance department, and we appreciate all their work. But I don't see any questions at this time, and thank you again for a clean report. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. And with that, I'll probably stay online in case there's anything else, but I'll turn my mic and video off and turn it back over to Hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, Hope, congratulations to you, Lindsey, and your entire staff. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Michael. I know 2021 is in the past, and a lot has changed since then, but our 2021 financial shown here will show that we're in strong financial position. The annual financial statements are required to be completed within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year, and that is by state law and by bond covenants. And the financial statements are required to be audited by an independent CPA firm. The primary goal of the private sector is to make a profit. And with us, obviously, being in the government sector, we have economic goals, and so our principal objective is societal and to provide services to our citizens. There are three perspectives for analysis. The first one is near-term financing. This produces the traditional fund statements. And what that means is that instead of consolidating all of our accounts and records into one, we maintain separate sets of books for dedicated funding streams that we have for specific activities that we need to keep segregated. Those fund statements produce information that I'm going to share with you today. The second is financial position. This is the traditional way that businesses report their financial information. For traditional statements, we produce what are called entity-wide statements that establish our financial position. Just like a private corporation rolls up all of their activity, of their various divisions, into a single set of financial statements, we are rolling up all the activities of all of our funds into, excuse me, to produce a single set of financial statements for Sedgwick County. And the third is the long-term trends, and these are shown in the statistical section of the audit report. There are two bases of accounting measures that are used in the audit report. The first is the traditional statements use the modified accrual approach, and this is the combination of cash basis and full accrual accounting methods in terms of revenue recognition. The second is the entity-wide statements, and they use the full accrual approach. Before we jump into the data on all of these slides, I just wanted to point out that the page numbers are referenced up at the top for what's in the actual book. So if you want to look back later, that's where you can reference that information. We will begin with the traditional fund statements, and I'm going to begin with the fund balance. The fund balance is the amount of net assets that we have on hand within our accumulated governmental funds at the end of the year. This chart shows five years of history, so that you can get a sense of whether changes have occurred over the last five years and what kind of changes have transpired. The chart is divided into different colors, each representing a different fund or fund type for all of the county's governmental activities. The very bottom is of the county's general fund, and it's the largest single area of our financial system, and it's where most of the governmental activities take place. And the general fund ended 2021 with a fund balance of 88.3 million. The chart shows that over the last five years, the general fund balance has gone from 66.2 to 88.3 million. At the top of the chart, you're going to see the PBC Fund, which is the Public Building Commission Fund, and it's represented by the thin green line, which had an ending fund balance of 1.5 million. And that is primarily money that was collected by the PBC to pay for a building on Wichita State University's Innovation Campus. And the bonds that the PBC sold to pay for that building will be repaid solely with the proceeds from the Wichita State University mill levy that we impose. The orange segment immediately below that represents the debt proceeds funds, which has a balance of 5 million. These are funds that account for bond proceeds from the sale of debt that haven't been used either to pay for the projects or to refund the debt for which the bonds were sold. The thin blue line below that represents the debt service fund, which has a balance of 1.5 million. The gray segment represents all other funds, which is a combination of the fund balances of the fire district, special revenue funds, and the capital project funds. The fund balance for that was 70.3 million. The brown segment represents the federal and state assistance or the grant funds, and that has an ending balance of 31.1 million. And then the dark blue segment at the bottom of the chart again is the general fund, which is our biggest fund, has 88.3 million. Now we will look at the general fund. This chart identifies five years of the general fund, fund balances, and it identifies the classifications of fund balances within each year. The dark blue section at the bottom of the chart represents the non-spendable fund balance, and these are net assets that are related to inventories, receivables, and other things that can't be readily spent. The brown bar represents assigned fund balance, and every year when we adopt a budget, we budget for a large amount of contingencies in case we get hit by a major storm or an event like we've had, and that's to provide legal spending authority. When we do that, we are assigning that fund balance, we are designating a use for it in the subsequent year, and you can see that the designated fund balance for the assigned fund balance was 26 million. The yellow segment at the top of the chart is unassigned fund balance. That's the amount of the general fund fund balance for which there has been no designated use. The sum of the unassigned fund balance and the assigned fund balance, which is 49.4 million and 26 million at the end of 2021, equals what in accounting we refer to as unrestricted fund balance. The county has a fund balance policy that states that the unrestricted general fund fund balance should never be less than 20% of budgeted expenditures and transfers in the general fund. What you see on this slide is a demonstration of our compliance with that policy. We ended the year with 81 million of unrestricted fund balance, budgeted expenditures were 225 million, and the 20% threshold was 45 million. Our unrestricted fund balance at the end of the year stood at 36.3%, as compared to our 20% minimum policy threshold, so we exceeded the threshold by 36.7 million. Now we'll look at the near-term financing indicators of financial condition within the traditional fund statements. One of the key questions that we want to be able to answer has to do with the budgetary solvency of our governmental funds. And the first question is, are the county's annual revenues sufficient to pay for the annual budget? What you see on this chart shows 10 years of history, and for each year, it identifies the percentage that revenues made of expenditures. What we want to see ideally is for those data points to be right at or slightly above the 100% line. And what we see on this chart is that we have consistently been below the 100% line. In 2021, our governmental fund revenues amounted to be about 99% of governmental fund expenditures. To get a more reasonable picture of whether or not we are able to pay for our own operations, we use the operating solvency indicator, which takes the same revenue base and compares it to the governmental fund expenditures, but it excludes PBC, debt service, and debt proceeds funds. This is a measure of our operating solvency as opposed to the budgetary solvency. Again, we want to be at or above the 100%, and in 2021, we ended with revenues at about 101.1% of expenditures. Another question that we want to answer has to do with the flexibility of county finances. To what extent do we have full control over the use of our resources? And in order to answer that question, we need to look at the total debt service, which is the total principal and interest obligations that the county has incurred as a percentage of all expenditures that we incur. To the extent that we have debt service expenditures that take priority over everything else, we'll have to do that because we have contractual obligations that we must fulfill. So to the extent that we have those expenditures, they're going to consume the available resources that we have. At the end of the year, our debt service expenditures amounted to 3.8% of all governmental fund expenditures. You see on this chart that we have consistently been between 3% and 6%, except for the years 2012 through 2014, when our debt expenditure, service expenditure spiked because we were engaging in a series of refundings, paying off bonds early during those years. The next question that we want to ask is whether or not the county has had any difficulty paying its short-term obligations, and this will be a measure of our liquidity. This measure looks at the total cash and investments that the county has on hand at the end of the year as a percentage of its liabilities. What this chart shows is that at the end of 2021, our cash on hand amounted to $2.61 for every dollar of liability. This is the final measure of near-term financing. How much are we relying on other areas of government to fund our activity? What is the total intergovernmental revenue as a percentage of total revenue? What we have seen over the past 10 years is that intergovernmental revenue has consistently been between 14% and 16% of all of our revenue within governmental funds, except for this year. This chart shows that typically, we have not heavily been relying on intergovernmental revenue to pay for our operations. The percentage for 2021 was 24.8% due to the COVID relief funds that we received. Now we will dive into the entity-wide financial statements. The entity-wide statements are the statements that wrap all of the county's financial activity into a single set of financial statements on a full accrual basis, so similar to what a private business would do. I begin with the county's net position or the county's net worth. So the county has a net position at the end of 2021 of 544 million, identified by the series of bars on the chart. 2021's ending net position of 544 million is higher than the level of 2016, when our net position was 504.9, so that's a good five-year comparison. Within each bar, you see the composition of our net position. The dark blue segment identifies capital assets, net of any debt that is outstanding that was used to pay for those assets. The 2021 total is 478.4 million. The lighter blue segment represents restricted net position, and the nature of the restrictions is illustrated in the pie chart on the right. There are eight identified restricted funds listed, the largest being capital improvements at 19.9 million. The county's total restricted net position at the end of 2021 was 62 million, 17.6 million more than the previous year. The significant reduction in the restricted funds from 2017 to 2018 is due again to refunding of the 2008 PBC bonds for approximately $26 million. Finally, the light blue segment at the very top, which is a little hard to see, it represents the unrestricted net position. So what we want to know with financial position, perhaps the most important question is, did it improve or did it deteriorate? What this chart shows is that our financial position improved by just over a half a percent, which is a good indicator going into 2022. In the statement of activities, our beginning net position was 531.4 million, and our ending position was 544 million. Our financial position improved because our revenues exceeded our expenses by about $13 million. One of the things that we're always concerned with is the extent to which various activities of the county are able to support themselves with their own self-generated or program revenue. We're not in the profit-making business, so we don't expect governmental activities to be fully self-supporting, but to the extent that they can generate their own revenues, it means that we don't have to provide tax support. it means that we don't have to provide tax support dollars in order to pay for all of those activities. So what this chart shows are the various activities of the government. The functions of the government are represented by a bar, and within that bar, you'll see that it shows the expenses for the year. The dark blue area is the amount of program revenue or self-generated revenue that the activity produced to pay its bills, and the light blue area, the second bar, is the amount of general revenue or tax support revenue that was required in order to pay the bills for that program or activity. So what this chart shows is the single largest area in Sedgwick County in terms of expense is public safety. During 2021, we spent 158 million on public safety activities. Public safety was able to produce about 38 million of program revenue through municipal jail fees and various grants to cover those bills, but the balance of about 120 million was required to be provided by taxes levying on Sedgwick County residents. So 76% of public safety activities were funded by taxes. General government incurred 124 million in expenses, and general government required about 37.5% tax support, and the rest of that comes due to COVID funding that we received in that particular area. Health and welfare activities, which includes comm care, the health department, CDDO, and aging services, incurred 53 million in expenses, requiring 20% tax support. Of that 53 million, about 43 million was paid for with program income generated by those activities, which are fees that are imposed on clients. There are different measures that can be looked at to determine the adequacy of financial position and of entity-wide statements. What I'm going to focus on here is the solvency measure, which looks at the county's ability to pay off its long-term debt and with its assets. What we're doing is taking long-term liabilities as a percentage of assets, and what we'll see is that in 2021, we ended the year with long-term liabilities equal to about 26% of assets. In other words, 26 cents of every liability was covered by a dollar of an asset. The county is in very good condition to pay off its long-term debt. Just to note, the 2014 increase from what traditionally had been around the 20% threshold was due to debt refinancing that we were undertaking. The 2015 spike, which went up to the 35% threshold, it's due to one of the standards that Michael had mentioned earlier. It was a caper's liability that we had to reflect differently on our books. So with that liability, this chart still shows that we still have the ample ability to be able to repay our debts. The last tab in the audit report is the statistics section. This section contains a lot of good information for anybody who might be interested in evaluating Sedgwick County finances. I'm going to spend some time showing some of the indicators and trends that can be identified by looking at these statistics. First, we'll look at the 10-year history of governmental revenues and expenses with federal COVID funding included in the numbers. So on this chart, the dark blue line represents revenue. The lighter blue line represents expense. What you would hope to see is that the dark blue line is above the light blue line. So in 2021, that is the case, as revenues are 413.6 million and expenses are 397.5 million. You can also see the extent to which revenues and expenses have grown over the 10-year period. Now we will look at the 10-year history of governmental revenues and expenses with federal COVID funding excluded, so you can get more of a realistic picture. So on this chart, the dark blue line again represents revenue, and the light blue line represents expenses. What you would hope to see again is that the dark blue line would be above the light blue line. In 2021, revenues are 334.3 million and expenses are 324.2 million. Excuse me, just one second. In 2021, that is the case, as revenues are 334.3 million and expenses are 324.2. You can also see the extent to which revenues and expenses have grown. The chart shows that neither have grown very much, and expenses were decreasing yearly. We can also determine where the county has been placing its emphasis over the past 10 years by looking at the change of expenses over the 10-year period by function. And what this chart shows is the amount of increase or decrease of expenses in 2021 versus 2012, including federal COVID funding. The greatest source of increases for county expenses over the 10-year period has been general government, a 71.16 million. 54.5 of those expenses are related to federal COVID funding. Public safety expenses were 71.16. Culture and Rec increased 23.12 million over that 10-year period. And Public Works expenses decreased 1.03 million. Health and Welfare experienced a decrease of 5.59 million in expenses. That's a function of budget reductions that were made primarily in 2012, when the Health and Welfare activity incurred a 6.7% budget cut. And during this time, there were also reductions in staffing and comm care and aging. Community Development had a $3.1 million decrease in expenses, and Interest had a $3.44 million decrease. We can also determine where the county has been placing its emphasis over the past 10 years by looking at the change of expenses over that 10-year period by function, and here we're going to exclude CARES, sorry, federal COVID funding. The areas affected were, the greatest area was public safety at 23.15 million and general government at 16.55 million. Within our revenues, I've talked about the expectation that activities generate program revenue as much as possible to pay for their own way so that we don't have to levy additional taxes on citizens. And what this chart shows is 10 years of history of property tax revenue represented by the light blue line and program revenue represented by the dark line. Property tax revenue was nearly $39 million higher at 194.22 versus 155.44 in 2012. Over the 10-year period, program revenue decreased, 2012 through 2013, because there were decreases in program revenue pretty consistently, and during that period of time, property taxes stayed consistent. As a result, at the end of the 10-year period in 2021, property taxes now are substantially higher than program revenue, which is 194.22 million versus 176.11 million. What the chart shows is that over this past 10 years, the county has become increasingly reliant on property taxes as the principal funding stream to pay for county services. The significant drop in program revenue from 2015 to 2016 is attributed to three programs, the Affordable Airfares, the Elephant Barn, and Public Works. Because we're so reliant on property taxes, pay a lot of attention to the collection rate. How effective are we at collecting the property taxes that have been levied? This chart shows 10 years of history for collection rates. The chart shows that the tax year that is funding the budget year, so for example, 2020 taxes funded the 2021 budget. The most important thing to emphasize here is the county's collection rate, which is controlled principally by the activities of the county treasurer. At its very worst, over this 10-year period in 2011, the county collected 96.4% of all taxes that were levied. In other words, unpaid taxes represented less than 3% of the total levy. The tax year ended with a collection rate of 98.25%, the highest collection rate that we have on record. This indicates that the treasurer has been doing a very effective job of collecting property taxes, which is important for us because that's our primary source of funding the county. We will now talk about long-term debt. What you see on this chart is 10 years of history for the county's outstanding debt, each year represented by a bar, and within each bar, there are different colors representing different categories of debt. In 2021, the county had 41.9 million of general obligation debt. That's the dark blue line at the bottom. We had 1.6 million of special assessment debt. That's the thin dark blue line. We had 76 million of PBC debt. We had a very slight amount of about 3.4 million of lease debt represented by the fire apparatus, and that's the brown at the very top of the chart. What this chart shows is that the general obligation debt of the county has decreased steadily since its peak in 2012 at 86.8 million, down to 41.9 million. The PBC debt stated decreasing in 2012 and 13, but then spiked in 2014. This was caused by a refunding that we did in that year, so we sold additional debt for the refunding. Again, that debt will only be paid with the proceeds of the special property tax that is levied for WSU. Here in the statistics section, these are some charts that show 10 years of data about the county's performance, and this is usually what citizens are most interested in, is what did they get for their money? So let's begin with public safety activities. In 2021, we averaged nearly 44,582 calls per month in our emergency communication center, the 911 Center. That was a 5% increase from one year ago and a 13% increase over 10 years ago. EMS responded to about 5,819 calls per month in 2021. That was a 6% increase from the previous year and a 23% increase from 10 years ago. In the juvenile detention facility, the average daily population was 43. That was 2% less than the last year and 28% less than 10 years prior. And that's due to the policies that the commission has adopted over the past years to intentionally try and reduce the need to house juveniles in the detention facilities, and it's showing that it's successful. The adult detention facility had 1,422 people in custody on average every day of last year. It's 5% less than the previous year and 1% less than 10 years prior. We provided those public safety services with 1,321 employees. That's 7% less than the prior year, and, I'm sorry, yeah, and 7% less than the 10 years prior as well. In terms of fire service, the Fire Department reported in 2021 that they responded to 90 residential structure fires per 100,000 households. That's reported as a 12% decrease over a year and a 1% increase from 10 years prior. In 2021, the fire service responded to an average of 349 medical calls per month. That was a 12% increase over a year previous and a 6% increase from 10 years ago. The Fire District provided those services to the county from nine fire stations and no changes in the last 10 years. In health and welfare services, comm care saw 11,586 mental health clients in 2021, an increase of 1% from a year ago and a 6% decrease from 10 years ago. CDDO, the Community Development Disabilities Organization, had 2,653 citizens of Sedgwick County who were eligible to receive its services. That was a 2% increase from one year and a 10% increase from 10 years ago. We provided the health and welfare services with 521 employees, which is a 1% decrease from the year prior and a 2% decrease from 10 years prior. In public health service, we had non-COVID-related patient encounter slash appointments with 153,887 clients. That's a 61% increase from the prior year and a 13% decrease from 10 years prior. We had COVID-related patient appointment encounters with 449,178 patients, which is a 71% increase from the prior year. We provided 15,438 non-COVID-related immunizations, which is an 8% decrease from the year prior and a 37% decrease from 10 years ago. And then we provided 272,987 COVID-related immunizations in 2021. That's over 100% more than the prior year, as we only were able to provide 1,890 in 2020, as the immunizations were available in later 2020. In culture and recreation, the Sedgwick County Zoo had attendance of 634,267 people. That's 109% increase from the year prior and a 23% increase from 10 years prior. The Sedgwick County Park had annual attendance of 1,110,019 people, which is a 3% increase from the year prior and a 27% increase from 10 years prior. Culture and Recreation provided these services with 107 employees, with no change from the year prior, but 11% increase from 10 years prior. Interest Bank Arena was able to hold 71 events in 2021, which is good compared to 2020, where we were only able to hold 29 due to the pandemic, so that's 145% increase over one year and a 1% increase over 10 years. The annual attendance was 133,561 people, which is a 5% decrease from the year prior and a 62% decrease for 10 years prior. The profit returned to the county since the arena has opened is 3.1 million. In Public Works, the number of road miles improved was 104, which is a 3% increase from the year prior and a 40% decrease from 10 years prior. The number of road miles maintained was 604 in 2021. It's a 1% decrease from the year prior and a 2% decrease from 10 years prior. The number of household hazardous waste tons that were disposed in 2021 was 791. That's an 11% decrease from the year prior and a 19% increase from 10 years prior. And all of those workers performed with 118 employees in 2021, which is a 2% decrease from the year prior and a 3% increase from 10 years prior. Finally, in general government services, in 2021, we served 321,697 voters. It's almost consistent with the previous year, and it's a 17% increase from 10 years ago. We dealt with 219,121 taxable real estate parcels, which is a 19% decrease from the year prior, but a 3% increase from 10 years prior. The register of deeds processed 103,866 documents, which is a 16% increase from the year prior and a 33% increase from 10 years prior. The number of real estate records that were processed was 92,867, which is 17% higher than the year prior and 98% higher than 10 years prior. General government activities were provided by 411 employees, and the 1% change is, it's a negative from the year prior and the tenure is negative 4%. I just noticed it says 2020, but that's actual 2021 numbers. So the data for this might look a little skewed compared due to the pandemic, so that's why some of the percentages are large, and we tried to add in some that where we could that we knew for sure that the pandemic affected, but these are some of the statistics that everyone is really excited to see. So nonetheless, over the past 10 years, it shows that Sedgwick County has become a much more effective organization, and that's good news for our citizens and one of the biggest takeaways from my presentation. So with that, I would be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, Hope. I appreciate the detailed analysis that you all put together for us. This time, I think Tom would like to have a few statements.
I just want, thanks, Chairman. I just wanted to thank Hope for the presentation, and then call out finance just for three things very quickly here. First of all, they have won the 2020 Audit Award that is given by the Government Finance Officers Association. If you go up to Finance, which will soon be over in the Ruffin Building, you will see a wall of plaques. They win this routinely because of Lindsay's leadership and Brant and Hope in the accounting side doing a good job. And these are not normal times either. These are crazy times in the world of finance with federal dollars flowing, and some of the slides depict the financial changes that happen within the county, and for their staff to track this and properly report it to the county, I just wanted to call out and thank them for that. And then the middle of all that, we have a new county treasurer, Brandy Bailey, who was in finance and was a key player in the finance world before she was elected to office, and her loss in that office has caused Hope to scramble clearly. So I just want to commend her for her work while she's at the podium during what I would consider very unique times in the county. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to do that, Chairman.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that feedback for our staff. Did we have to pay overweight when we started moving all those plaques over to the other building?
They didn't have with us.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, really great job. And I want to say thank you to BKD. I think they did a great job also. I loved the briefing I got the other day. Congratulations to your entire team, Lindsay, and everyone that works in your department. You guys did just a tremendous job to get such a glowing report. I do have a few questions. I'd like to go back and clarify a couple of things. On Slide 12 and 13, I see the increasing lines there. Can you please explain those two slides again? That means we're less flexible, and we have more trouble satisfying short-term obligations the way I interpret these two charts.
Yeah, so it's basically the flexibility of the finances. Let me see if I can go back to, oops. Let me see if I can go back to, oops.
It seems like we would have, since we have more ending balance, he would think we'd be more flexible. I guess I'm a little concerned. How is that?
Okay, so what is showing here is, this is slide 12. Is that what you're asking about?
12 and 13.
Okay, yeah. So this is talking about if we have full control over it, if we're able to look at our total principal and interest as a percentage of all of our expenditures. So that's kind of what it's showing here is that how are flexible are our county finances? It's taking our total principal and interest on our long-term debt and dividing it by our government fund expenditures. So it's showing that our debt has been decreasing.
This is actually a good thing.
Yes, this is a good thing. This is a good chart to go down.
That's what I was trying to figure that out. Same thing with slide 13 as well, same interpretation.
Correct.
Over on slide 23, please. This is a bit concerning. Is there, is there some explanation how, again, this was removing the COVID, you know, federal funds that were infused into our government in the last two and a half years so far? But this is a concerning chart because when that money drops off and goes away, are we setting up a precedent here for some type of spending that's going to come back and hurt us later on? I guess I'd like to understand what's causing this to be, I'm going to use the word upside down. My 10.1 million dollars upside down here.
Commissioners, Lindsay Pogerso, you're CFO. So thanks, Hope, for letting me jump in. So if you recall, in 2021, we used up nearly all of our contingencies in the general fund because we had had that infusion of cash from carers in 2020. Obviously, we thought with vaccines, we were going to be in a much better situation for 2021 related to COVID, and we were not. So we wound up spending a significant amount of that carers funding that had come into the general fund in 2020 on COVID response out of the general fund. Because that's not federal COVID funding, that's excluded from this chart. And that's why you'll see that we're a little bit upside down. But that was okay. That was, that was a strategic use of fund balance that had been out of the prior year.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and don't go too far. I hope you went very quickly on slide 26. You said there was three reasons. You say Alford Barn, the affordable airfares, and what was the third thing you said?
Roads and bridges for public works.
But that's fairly consistent. What happened there that caused that? Why is that a factor? I understand that there are two, but what, that's not something that's...
If you were, Lindsay Pogerso again, sorry. So if you recall, we had some significant cash that we have invested related to the Kellogg interchange. And so as those dollars were in the budget and out of the budget related to any cash funding, that caused fluctuations, but we can get the specifics.
It's about 11.5 million dollars roughly.
Over three years, yes.
Yeah, I do remember that very well. Then on slide 27, I just want to make a comment. This 3%, you said less than 3% of this is unpaid taxes. That's first year only, correct? There was people tip, sometimes, there are some people out there that are bad actors, if you will. They don't pay their taxes, but they do pay them eventually. They'll pay them in year three or four. They'll pay off the oldest year first, but there's interest applied. At the end of the day, after they pay the interest on their late taxes and they do pay those taxes, how much of that property tax levy is actually not paid at the end of that process? I think it's very, way less than a half percent, like point 05%. It's way, yeah, that's a guess, but it's a very, very small number. So I would like people, I want people to understand this 3% is not really the way it is. If you're looking at first year only, I think that may be correct. But there's always money coming in later. Can you please explain that?
We will have to look that up for you and get that to you at a later point.
And the reason that's important is because there are some people out there that are bad players, but there are also some people out there that are having trouble. And I want to be very patient and give them some time to pay their property taxes. They will pay them. If they don't pay them, we take their house and put it on an auction and get our money back. So very, very small amount of this money is not collected at some point. People think this is an unfair situation where people aren't paying their taxes. I don't want that to be the understanding. People are paying their taxes. Go ahead.
If you reference page E11 in the annual financial report, it will show the percentage of the original levy and then the collection in the subsequent years.
Okay, I'll go look that up. Do you have that number in front of you though? The final, how much is not collected after the...
Collections in subsequent years was 1.5 for 2019. 2020 is not available yet.
Okay, again, so some people are...
For tax year.
Yeah, some people are paying not just the second year or the, sometimes they pay in the third and the fourth year. So you have to go back, go to what happened, although it was levied four years ago, how much of that total tax has been collected is really the number. And then again, they also paid fairly high interest rates on the delinquent tax. So this idea that someone's a bad actor, they're not paying their taxes, that's really not quite a fair assessment because, again, there are some people who are doing this intentionally, but there's also penalties applied. At the end of the day, the taxes that are not collected is a very, very small number. Again, I think it's less than point 1%. I'm not sure exactly, exactly the number. But at the end of the day, we actually do sell some properties out from under the owners to repay the government for their fair share, so to speak, of taxes. Am I right, Lindsay? Okay.
Yeah, if you go back to a few years prior, it shows on that page in 2018, 99.35. That was what our percentage of the adjusted levy is after, so.
I want to make a comment on slide 30. It's really not going to be a slide number, but it's the one that refers to public safety services. The average daily juvenile population detention, oh, the 10-year, the 10-year number percent, was reduced by 28%. That's a consequence of Senate Bill 367. I always forget the number. That does not mean that we've solved this problem. What this means is we're not detaining kids. Let me just say again, you can talk to the district attorney, talk to the sheriff. You have kids riding around at night with a stolen car or stolen guns or whatever. They don't get put up in detention unless they actually hurt somebody. If they commit a violent crime, they'll be detained. Otherwise, they're just basically booked and released. So it's, it's really not a fair assessment of what's going on. We have a dysfunctional system that needs to be fixed. Senate Bill 367 needs to have some repairs. But this chart makes it look like we've solved some problems. In reality, we're just ignoring the problem. So let's not get that misunderstood. And then finally, I believe, let's see here. On the immunizations, I'd like to know from the Health Department's perspective, why has that number changed so drastically? I don't know what's going on there. That seems to be a very strange reduction in immunizations. Hopefully, someone has an explanation for that. It says 37% reduction over 10 years.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Tim Coff and Deputy County Manager. I'll have Adrian follow up with a more complete response, but part of it has to do with the types of vaccinations that the Health Department offers now versus what they did in the past. There are more providers available now than in the past. And the population that we serve has narrowed to primarily children and then the uninsured. And so it's a, part of it is because we serve a different population than we did 10 years ago.
The travel, the travel immunizations, we're still doing, and we're doing them again now, correct?
We are. That's a very small number.
Okay, so I'd like to get some reporting on that. And then finally, this is my last question, I promise, Chairman. The Sales Tax Reserve Fund for Interest Bank Arena, it says they return 3.1 million dollars to the taxpayers or whatever. That's also not quite the full picture here because that fund has reduced significantly since 2007, I guess, when we started using that fund.
Yes, so, so we will start doing those bi-annual presentations to you in August now that we actually have activities to report on. And so we will do kind of a deeper dive at that time about the status of the Sales Tax Reserve Fund because as, as you heard during your briefings, part of the single audit that's included with this included that deep dive on the shuttered venue operators grant, which provided $10 million related to operations at the arena and have actually significantly improved our position. So I will want to get into that in a little bit deeper conversation here in a couple of months.
That fund was not Sales Tax Reserve Fund though, was it?
It was, based on what the direction was, it was placed into the enterprise fund. However, it was put in its own separate category and we're actually transferring, it's an expense to the, to the grant that becomes revenue to the operating reserve fund. So it's kind of, it's a little goofy.
So it's a blessing that we have this fund, but it's a concern because it's hitting, it's going to hit zero at some point soon. When that happens, this becomes a general property tax problem. People paying property taxes to Central County Government need to understand they are now essentially using property taxes to replace what was a sales tax. Sales tax has been depleted and we're going to be using property tax to do the very same thing. That's coming.
Eventually.
That's coming. All right. Thank you, Chairman. That's all my questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder, over the last couple of days, I have had a lot of comments from senior citizens living on a fixed income in our community. And that makes me wonder, and I have done a little bit of just Googling, quite frankly, about states who have a property tax freeze for those living on a fixed income. There are, according to the National Conference of State Legislatures, there are 14 total states who have property tax freezes based on, based on those living on a fixed income. And so what would it take and what would be the hit to our budget if we were to work with our state legislature to, maybe that's something we put on our platform in the future, to see how we could come up with a solution for those so that they aren't taxed, so that people aren't taxed out of their homes? For example, New Jersey had, they started theirs in 1998. It's age 65 or older and it is, there is an income base. There's an income requirement. And so like Oklahoma, 1996 was their start. Rhode Island, 2009. Tennessee, 2006. Texas, 2003. So the list goes on to 14 other places, right, in total. But I'd like to know what the, what the impact would be to our budget? How many people that would affect here? Because it is heartbreaking to hear from seniors who are being, they, they live on a fixed income. My dad lives on a fixed income. It's hard to hear these conversations and know how to ease fears when everything is going up and they might lose their home. And so I'd really like to consider looking at ways that we could discuss or at least start the conversation around a property tax freeze that makes sense for our government and for the citizens in which we serve.
So I think the legislature has looked at that over time. They have looked at that. They've looked at freezes for veterans and for some other groups. With the data that we have, we don't necessarily know the age of our taxpayers. And so it is a challenge for us to get specific information. But as, when those bills have been crafted, there have been some fiscal impact estimates done. So we can look at that. It will be hard to give you a precise figure, but we can sure do our best.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think it's really important for us to at least consider it as we're going to be, I mean, we're already in a housing crisis. And so if those folks lose their home, we could see that only get worse. So I appreciate the work that, you know, in advance that will be done to figure this out because I think it's vital that we take care of those who essentially built a lot of this around here. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Well, Hope, Lindsay, Michael, everyone, thanks again for everything that you've done to present this to us today. And Michael, thanks for joining us by Zoom. I appreciate it very much. I don't see any further questions, so I move that we receive and file. We have a motion and a second A for the discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on June 2, 2022.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners Joe Thomas, Percival Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on June 2. We have four items to present to you this afternoon. Our first one is recovery beds for the Department of Corrections. This recommendation is to accept the contract with Seventh Direction Incorporated at the contract rate listed for one year with four one-year options to renew. Item number two is diesel fuel additive for fleet management. This recommendation is to accept the bid from NCH Corporation, doing business as certified laboratories. And that will be to establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is oil and fluids for fleet management. And this recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Heathwood Oil Company Incorporated and establish that contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. And our final item, item four, is half-ton crew cab four-wheel-drive truck with a short bed for fleet management at Lake Afton Park. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Don Hatton Chevrolet in the amount of $56,600. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Well, thank you, Joe. I appreciate it. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this vehicle, a couple of questions here. It sounds like the number one reason we're selling it is because it has a cooling problem? Are you selling it and buying a replacement?
I believe there were maintenance and cooling. Beau, would you like to speak to the specifics on that? I believe there was a couple of issues.
Some surprise or...
What was your on fleet management? The main thing is that it's not big enough for their, what they use it for now. That was their main concern, was the size of the vehicle. But the smaller vehicle does have cooling issues with the off-road that they do when they're patrolling the, the lake.
Again, we're still using that 15-point scale. And I keep thinking that that's not the best. I'm just going to say once again, I think we need to have a independent assessment of each vehicle before we sell it in terms of its condition because I think age and miles is really not the way to do this. This is an older vehicle, 2008, and the miles is very low, 69,000 miles. So having said that, I, I just don't know what the condition of the vehicle is. In terms of a cooling problem, it seems like that should be fixable, whatever the problem is. But if you need a bigger vehicle, that's fine, I guess. But I don't know that I like this coming to us with the 17.3-point assessment when really hasn't been, I don't think it's been looked at in terms of its general condition. I'd like to go back and revisit that policy once again. I'll just keep saying that. So I'll support the motion today. One other thing I have a question is, it says that sent it to 95 vendors, but it says no bid. It lists six of those 95. It doesn't list the other ones. I'm just curious, was this, was this sent out to other local, do we specify Chevrolet or we didn't specify?
No, this went to local dealers, quite a few. And when you have no bid, it means that they didn't respond to it. They didn't come back and say, we choose not to bid. And a lot of that's going back to the inventory. The car manufacturers are having problems with regards to the semiconductors. And in some cases, we're being told that they're not willing to even provide us pricing on government contract items.
I'm just curious why we listed the six, but it didn't list the rest?
Because those were the only six that specifically sent us back a no bid.
Oh, I see.
Yes, sir.
The other ones didn't respond at all?
At all.
Okay. All right, that helps. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Well, thank you. I appreciate questions and answers. I did have lunch the other day with a couple of car dealers at the Crime Commission Luncheon. And they said that they can't get cars. They have nothing available. They're probably not going to bid on too much that, because the reason I brought it up was said, hey, we're having trouble getting people to bid. And so they just don't have anything to bid on. And if they get an invoice on a car that's coming in or a vehicle, it's sold before it even arrives. So we're going to face this over and over again. We understand that. I don't see any other questions. Move that we approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Chairman. And Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items E through H this morning.
Thank you. Move to approve echo through hotel and consent. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
I don't think we have anything during legislative issues today. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Do any Commissioners have anything that they'd like to report during committee reports? Seeing nothing, next item, please.
Other.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to invite all to our second installment of Let's Talk Budgets. It will be in Valley Center on Monday, June 13. We're going to start at 6 o'clock. It will be housed and hosted, excuse me, at the community center there, which is 314 East Clay Street. We will be teaming up with the City of Valley We will be teaming up with the City of Valley Center to discuss both the Sedgwick County proposed budget and the Valley Center budget. It will be an interactive discussion where you will be able to showcase what's important to you when it comes to the tax dollars being spent during this next budget cycle. So I hope to see you there. It is, again, Monday, June 13, at 6:00 in Valley Center. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, and I just want to extend my appreciation to the Wichita Festivals group for a, in the middle of kicking off a great River Festival week. First weekend was very crowded. Estimates have been as high as one number and as low as another, but, but it's been, it's a great time, and we all participated in, most of us in the, in the egg toss, and I want to extend my congratulations to Chance Swaim and Matt Kelly for being the champion egg tosser without breaking an egg on, on themselves, so. And then many other congratulations to everybody. It's a nice event so far, so closing this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else during the other? Seeing nothing? We have no executive session today? Any Commissioners or anyone have anything else that needs to come before the board today? Seeing nothing? Or adjourned?